Okay, welcome everybody. And if you have a mic on, I would ask you to mute it when you're not speaking. My name is John Heftje and I teach a class at the University of Michigan Ford School of Public Policy. It is 4:56.
Recording has started.
4:56 and 7:56. And we welcome you to this Candidates Forum. We've been doing this in this class for several years. This particular group of students has, of course, gone through some challenges that people haven't had in the past, but they've been doing very, very, very well with it. Throughout the semester, they've been looking at the challenges facing local government. The class is Local Government Opportunity for Activism. And they look at those challenges both locally and nationwide. Things like all of the challenges that cities are going to face due to climate change around the coasts of the United States particularly. So, and then we look at also things like gentrification, affordable housing, and just several governance issues having to do with cities. So, we are happy to have you with us and we're going to be getting started here right away. Just a little explanation of the ground rules. Candidates will have two minutes to answer each question. And the students were developed and will be asked by questions. Students who are in the class, they've developed the questions and they'll be putting them forward. When 30 seconds, when you have 30 seconds left, there'll be a notice and I would introduce very quickly Carlotta, who is going to be giving you that notice. Carlotta, would you pop up here for a second? There she is.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, and would you demonstrate the notice for us, the 30 second and the two minute?
Yeah, I'll ring a little bell like this. And I will say 30 seconds or time's up depending on where the marker is.
Thank you. Appreciate you doing it. And so when you hear that and you hear her voice, you have 30 seconds left and then, of course, there's times up. So, I will be calling on the, saying who the question is for and which study group will be offering that question. So, if we're all set, we can get started right now. Okay, our candidates today, we've had some changes from what was listed. Some people have had some things come up and some new candidates have drawn petitions but couldn't be with us today. So, we will have from the first ward Lisa Dish, from the second, running for the second ward seat Lynn Song, and for the third ward seat Evan Redman and Travis Redina. And the first question, which will go to all council members, and we'll start with Lisa Dish and that will be a question from Study Group Five.
Hi, thank you so much for being here. My question is, what has compelled you to run for city council? And if you could tell the audience about your core campaign issues? Thanks.
Thank you. Look, I feel compelled to run because I care about the kind of things that I think most Ann Arborites care about. I believe in ecological and urban stewardship. I believe in housing justice. I believe in evidence-based democracy and I love the quirkiness that makes Ann Arbor an engaging place to live. This isn't a suburb that came out of a box, you know? We've got, we've got some weird here and we've got creativity. But what I hear when I talk to people in my ward is that they feel that the past few years on council has been a story of missed opportunities and also some decisions that really take us away from those core values. So, my core issues are affordable housing and A2 zero or carbon neutrality in the city. And I want to move us toward a more progressive vision of basic services. I think that it is the role of government to act to protect people against the harms that no individual can either mitigate or combat on their own. And that's what it means to be a progressive. Progressivism started in this country battling things, battling for things like food safety and then moved on to establishing social security and unemployment insurance. I forgot to mention the national parks, which was another thing that the progressives gave us. Many of the things that we count as basics today are legacies of the, looked like, were not at all basic, or rather, what we take as basics today were bold initiatives of the progressive era. And what I'd like to do in my time on council is make some decisions that might strike people as bold but will become basic for future generations.
Thank you. Thank you. And the next question will go to Lynn Song. Or actually, the same question, I'm sorry, the same question to Lynn Song. And we can repeat a question at any time.
Sure, I think I, I think I can answer it. Why I'm running, I ran in 2016 for the Ann Arbor District Library and was elected and have since served on that board. I'm currently the president and will be fulfilling my term at the end of this year. I'm choosing to serve, or I'd like to serve for city, on city council and just bring the experiences that I've learned from there when it comes to good governance, being able to meet the community where the, our needs are. The library, if you're familiar with our public library, is one of the best libraries in the country. And we keep our doors open. If you see us, the downtown library especially, open in the morning, you'll see us open the doors to families coming in for storytime, to our most vulnerable community members coming in to be able to stay warm, look for jobs, use computers. But personally, what I, the reason why I'd like to really pursue public service has been the same reasons why I ran in the first place. And that's really to honor my, my family's history in this country. The end of this month is the end, is the 45th anniversary of the fall of Saigon. And I've shared this before, I, I'm the firstborn American in my family. My father was Arvin Medavec, who escaped the day Saigon fell. My mother escaped Laos from the communist, the Tet Lao regime a year later. And our family started with nothing. My parents came, came, started over as janitors, dishwashers, and just clawed their way out of poverty. So, together, you know, we benefited from WIC, ESL, Public Institutions. And it's, it's, it's our, it's my way, I think, of honoring my family's struggle and then also to demonstrate to my children that, you know, Americans come from all sorts of experiences and we have so much to contribute to, to this country. And local government matters. We, the decisions that are made in local government impacts our daily lives and I'd like to be able to be part of that.
Thank you very much. And the same question now goes to Evan Redman.
All right. Okay, the second part of the question. First part of the question. So, what can help us to run? As far as the platform this year, the climate team, my number one priority, the city has declared a climate emergency. And from past emergencies, the city long-term declares it not always necessarily allows the rule and the promise of affordable housing. So, climate change is key. Right now, DTE is a geopolitical blocking that you can't get, taking 100% renewable energy. What we have to do is establish a publicly-owned community electric, electric utility. Also, they're part of my neighborhood. And even though they're the best areas on my machine, it will be underwater in 10 years and unlivable. And that is unacceptable. And if we're going to attack our city, parts of Ann Arbor. You have to do everything you can and take actions that seemingly go for kill from what we've been doing in the past and the necessary to prevent catastrophe. Second is affordable housing. Affordable housing all the time is the, is an ever-moving target. So, my plan is to create a massive expansion in publicly-owned housing in the city of Ann Arbor. Not only can the city build housing and rent it out for nearly our, almost half the price of market rate unit, but also create a profit unit, increase the tax base, increase density, once again, to help with climate change and allow more people to live in town. I used to work at the River Michigan Hospital and I would ride for a bus with people that work every day, cooking, cleaning, taking care of patients, who don't make enough money to live in town where they work. And that's ridiculous. We need to provide the workers for affordable housing where they can live where they work. And finally, police oversight. The police oversight.
Thank you, Evan. Thank you. And we, we've got quite a bit of lag when you're talking and you just might want to, if you're using a microphone, maybe move it a little bit back. But we can understand you, so we appreciate it. And the same question will now go to Travis Redina.
Thanks. First, I want to thank Mayor Heftje and the Public Policy Class for hosting this session today and providing voters with an opportunity to get to know us as candidates. This is an especially challenging time to connect with our neighbors and so thank you for hosting this. I'm running for city council because I believe that Ann Arbor residents pay for and deserve better than basic public services because access to clean drinking water should be a basic human right and because we are in the midst of a housing and affordability crisis that is threatening our city's future. I'm running because I want to help achieve our ambitious carbon neutrality goals and to expand upon our city's long history of leadership on human and civil rights. But most importantly, I am running because I believe that I am the most experienced and qualified person to get the job done. I grew up the proud son of a UAW autoworker, a public school employee, and they instilled in me the values of hard work and the importance of giving back. Both of those things led me into a life of public service. I volunteered on my first political campaign when I was just 14 years old and I never really looked back. At U of M, I was involved in the College Democrats and in political and social movements on campus. I marched in picket lines with Geo and Leo. After graduating, I worked on Mark Shower's successful 2008 congressional campaign and then went on to work in Lansing as the constituent services director and later as legislative director for the Michigan House Democratic Floor Leader, both in the majority and the minority, I might. That was a job that instilled in me a deep understanding of how customer service and policy should work in our government, but also how to get things done across political divides. I'm currently the, serving in my fourth term as president of the Jim Toy Community Center and I've served two years as LGBTQ liaison for the city of Ann Arbor. I am running for council because I know that Ann Arbor is already a great place to live, but because we still have work to do if we want the Ann Arbor of tomorrow to continue being a prosperous, inclusive, and desirable place to live, work, raise your family, and eventually retire.
Thank you. Thank you. The next question will come from, excuse me, the next question will come from Study Group Five and that question will be directed to all council members and it will go first to Lynn Song.
Hi, so our question is, do you support the construction of more residential units and greater access to? If so, how do you suggest dealing with social and political barriers to the skull, opposition within the city council, and from not in my backyard groups? Thank you.
Hi again, thanks for that question. It's a great and timely question. You know, our city really struggles with an affordable housing crisis. It's a, it's, it's a question that comes up in my neighborhood too. We, our city made a commitment in 2015 to build about 140 units a year to accommodate the demand. We have, I think, over 4,300 people applied for our affordable housing waitlist this time last year for 600 units. Are, we have, we are far, far behind in our commitment to build. We've only built 50 units since 2015 and not 140 that we needed per year. And what that means is that impacts real lives. People on the waitlist are single parents, veterans, people who already work in this community, have their kids living here, going to school here. So, what this means is that, you know, we need to understand that the barriers are our own selves. The conversations against development are, you know, this is too much changed for the character of my neighborhood. And for me, I feel like, because I stayed here because of my neighborhood, my neighborhood is my family. And that we would all benefit from a bigger family, from a bigger neighborhood. We should welcome folks here. And, you know, I think we also think we need to think creatively and not have to rely on developers to fund the work. And that means, you know, looking at models across the country. The library itself had looked at a model where we would build affordable housing above the downtown library. We've looked, and that's, that's something that happens in Chicago with six public libraries. Durham, the city of Durham had collaborated with Duke University and community foundations to build their affordable housing. So, I think we've tried to have a conversation, but it's time to really press and see if we can be creative and look to real solutions in a timely manner.
Thank you. Appreciate it. That question now goes to Evan Redman. And Evan, if you may want to try it without your earphones, I don't know if they could possibly affect your voice transmission. But that same question goes to Evan Redman.
Can you hear me a little bit better?
Yes.
If you couldn't hear my opening statement, it was really, really good. So, sorry about that, everyone. Yes, I definitely think that Ann Arbor needs to greatly increase the, the units in town. As I said in my opening statement, you may not have been able to hear, but it's a full, a massive expansion of publicly-owned housing. I would just set the record for a second. In 2015, the city had the goal to make 424 housing units per year. And in 2019, they did not even make the average, the adjusted all of 140. So, the city has been falling down on creating affordable housing that can also be rent control. I am for rent control, but that is currently illegal in the state. And so, the way that we can control rents is by making publicly-owned housing. And like I said in my opening statement, which you may not have been able to hear, but the city can charge half of what the current market is charging and still make a profit after 10, this house, housing. Be super important in the future as we're about to go through a almost Great Depression-level economic slowdown. And as far as selling the idea to quote-unquote NIMBY groups, which stands for not in my backyard, I think that we have to frame the issue of density to an ecological issue. Need to increase density in order to make the walkable, bikeable cities and reduce vehicle miles traveled, which is a key part of the A2 zero plan in order to save off climate catastrophe. The room on it is very ecological, but so by framing this.
I'm afraid we lost you there, Evan.
Uh, okay. I will yield the rest of the time to figure this situation out. Please excuse me.
Okay. Yeah, it's, you're back on now for a minute, but we lost you there for a second. Good luck. That same question now goes to Travis Redina. And again, we can repeat any question.
Thanks. So, to answer the question, I am in favor of smart development policy because I think after years of gridlock on this issue, I want to be an agent for change on affordability issues here in our city. This issue is personal to me. I was lucky enough to buy my first home here in Ann Arbor in 2017 after a few years of being a renter. But my sister, who is a foster care social worker, simply cannot afford to live here in Ann Arbor on her salary alone. She's lucky in that she's able to live in my house and live with me and we're able to make that situation work, but that's not the reality for a lot of people. So, I do want to start, though, I think, by addressing the last part of the question first. And I think we need to be careful as political leaders about tossing around the term NIMBY too frequently. While I do believe that there is widespread public consensus in support of smart growth and density here in our community and I believe that an anti-rigid growth or anti-growth mentality would harm our city's future, I don't believe that all of our neighbors who voice concerns about specific development projects are motivated by so-called NIMBYism. I do think, however, because of the framing of our, our conversation and debate sometimes, that they can feel cast aside and not listened to because of it. So, I think we need to strive to be inclusive in our dialogue. We need to listen to our neighbors and to address some of the real concerns that they have about the impacts that new projects may have on our neighborhoods. That is our responsibility as political leaders. But then I ultimately think we do need to find a way to move forward on developments that make sense for our community. I was disappointed last week, for example, when city council tabled discussion about transit-oriented development. Mixed-use, increased density along transit corridors just makes sense for our community. It would increase our long-term fiscal health at a time of financial uncertainty, would increase our housing supply and reduce costs. And ultimately, it's unacceptable that so many hard-working people here in Ann Arbor, come here to Ann Arbor to work, but have to leave at the end of the day. So, we need to fix that.
Thank you. And that same question now goes to Lisa Dish.
Thank you. I strongly support creating affordable housing. I think I consider the city to be in an affordable housing crisis. Over the last 10 years, the average price for a single-family home increased from the mid $200,000 to almost half a million dollars. Now, we don't know what those numbers are going to look like after the current crisis, but unless supply increases, the numbers are going to stay high. Over that same period of time, a condo that cost you $132,000 in 1990, or rather, not 1990, in 2010, is now close to $300,000. So, we are in a crisis. We're in rapidly increasing home prices. And I think, as, as others have indicated, I don't think that it helps to frame this as a kind of, in moralistic terms, as a, an opposition between people who say yes to affordability and equity and growth and people who say no to it. I think rather, we should be framing this discussion in terms of the values that we know we share. And so, I think we want to talk about housing as a question of justice. I think we want to acknowledge that many of us who live in homes today in Ann Arbor, in single-family homes, are living off of the benefits of a housing building boom that occurred in the 1960s and 1970s. And I'm sure it looked disruptive to people then. Places that had been fields and orchards got filled with adorable little mid-century modern homes. It will be disruptive today to have a new housing boom, but those of us who live here now and who enjoy the benefits of homeownership owe it to future generations to give back and to accept disruption and change as part of what makes a city thrive.
Thank you. The next question will come from Study Group Three and we will start with Evan Redman.
All right, hi. So, my question is, sales tax revenue from state revenue sharing makes a large contribution to the city budget. But currently, sales tax revenue is projected to be well down from last year. Further, the city's revenue is still recovering from the Great Recession due to the Healy Amendment. With revenue streams declining, how do you plan on maintaining a healthy city budget?
All right, that's a great question. As I said in my previous answer, a big part of my platform is both provide affordable housing and generate more money for the community. Having affordable housing, not only will the city be able to, like I said, revenue from the rent will be below market rate, but also increase the tax base by allowing new people to move to Ann Arbor. And secondly, another big plank of my platform is peace oversight. Currently, Ann Arbor spends one-third of.
Hi Evan, I'm sorry, we're having this trouble. We're going to get, I'm going to give you another few seconds here to see if you can get back online.
I'm going to join with just audio. Can you hear me over here?
Yeah, why don't you try that? It's a good idea.
Perfect. You want me to see my suit jacket, but I think it'll be worth it. Yes, so currently, the Independent Police Oversight Commission is trying to actually regulate or investigate the Ann Arbor Police Department. So, right now, it'd be back a whole of money that Ann Arbor spends $30 million on every year. And some of this money could better be spent on public services used to help with this downturn from tax revenues that will be coming, as well as help with various other things such as improve social services, paying social workers more, potentially doing snow removal. And there's a lot of money that I believe can be used from that budget that we're spending incorrectly.
Thank you. And that question now goes to Travis Redina.
Thanks. I think this is a really important question, so thank you for asking about our budget. And I think unfortunately, the current public health crisis is also likely going to have an inevitable impact on Ann Arbor's budget for years to come. That issue is certainly made worse by the broken state municipal finance system that was referenced in the question and the impacts of the Healy Amendment and Prop A, which have really allowed the state to shortchange our city and other cities. Go with this. I think we can look to the experiences and the lessons that we learned from the Great Recession era a decade ago and actually from some of the leadership from Mayor Heftje, who helped guide us and Ann Arbor through that challenging time. I think we need to acknowledge that the biggest piece of our city budget is salaries and benefits for our municipal employees. And so, I think we need to focus our budget solutions to be creative so that we can maintain a commitment to providing basic services, but also ensure that we are doing everything in our power to avoid layoffs and prevent the outsourcing and privatization of work that is currently being done by highly skilled, often union laborers here in our public workforce. This is something that I think we can start now, beginning with the current council, by ensuring that any new recurring expenses must be offset by recurring revenues. That's simply good fiscal management. But then I think there are also things that we can do that are relatively small, but in reality can provide some significant savings for the city without having a huge impact on residents. One small example of that is, and something I believe that was done during the Great Recession era, is taking something as small as mowing our city parks every other week rather than weekly is a way to save significant amounts of money in temporary employment over the summer without having a huge impact on the day-to-day lives of our neighbors. I think there's also the very real possibility that priorities we have for our city might get delayed. And I think we need to continue engaging the public around what our priorities should be going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And now that same question will go to Lisa Dish.
Thank you. Yep, this is a tough question. I think one of the first things we want to do is recognize that no matter what the context, whether it's a boom time or a recession, cities are always asked to address more needs than they have resources. And so, while I would not diminish the fact that this is an unprecedented. And so while I would not diminish the the fact that this is an unprecedented crisis, a financial crisis that we face, um, I think it's it's, there are strategies that cities practice all the time that we can just double down on in these days. So first of all, I think that um we need to be realistic about the sources of our city's revenues. And the among the biggest sources of revenue besides Brierwood Mall, and who knows how long that will continue to be a big source of revenue, but that's for another conversation, um, are the new apartments that have been built recently. So the Foundry, the uh developments at at South U and the Varsity, these are things that are bringing significant revenues into the city's budget. And so we need to, as we um when we talk about development, we need to recognize what development does for us and how dependent we are on it, and also how fortunate we are to be a place where people um want to work and want to live. In addition, we need to be better stewards of the city's financial resources. We should, we should set our priorities and then take advice from staff when they give us evidence-backed ways of realizing those priorities. And thirdly, we need to be really good students of the budget. Um, we need to study the budget carefully and know where there is money to be found. We currently have about $4 million in priorities that are not urgent, although they are important. Um, for example, firehouse renovations, capital improvements, pension and health benefits. We wouldn't want to short these systematically over a long period of time, but we might be able to redirect some of these monies to ease us into this crisis and smooth our passage to recovery.
Thank you. And now that uh same question goes to Lynn Song.
Well, I've been taking the time to revisit what we've done uh in in response to the last recession. Um, I was just recently looking at an article. It was a a five-year look back from 2012, from uh looking back to 2007, and Pfizer closing, taking away um with with at 2,100 employees. Um, and at the time, with between Pfizer closing and Borders closing, you know, I uh I remember our city really feeling uh the impact with philanthropy with city revenue. Um, and I, and it was a good lesson, I think, because it meant that, you know, when we talk about how revenue comes to the city, uh and always being mindful of the limits that comes with Healy and Prop A, the state's Prop A, we also need to keep a close eye on the university. Um, the purchase of Pfizer campus was for 108 million. Uh, that was for 2 million square feet of taxable land use that we could have, that and took off $4 million off of our of our budget. Um, and you know, this is, we are, we are a company town. Um, our local businesses rely on university events for catering, for uh for our workforce. Uh, you know, now with uh the stay-at-home executive order, I think we can really feel the impact and the influence that the university has in our local economy. Um, when it comes to future budgeting, you know, I think what we can do is really, you know, take a look at what we're doing now and understanding what are the essential services that the city offers. Um, when I've been on the doors for past candidates before, people will define city services with, you know, can we bring back a leaf service pickup? But you know, I think we've, we're slowly understanding the value of having consistent city services, essential services, and what that means. And hopefully, we can um have our our community members adjust to a point where we'll have to make some really difficult decisions in the next fiscal cycle.
Thank you. Appreciate that. The next question will come from Study Group Two, and it will be directed first at Travis Redina.
Hi, how are you guys? Uh, so the question is, what is your diagnosis of the current state of the transit system and more generally, how people are able to get around in Ann Arbor? What two aspects would you prioritize to improve it? Thank you.
Thanks, and I'm sorry, could you repeat the beginning of that question again? You cut out a little bit on my end.
Yep, of course. Uh, what is your diagnosis of the current state of the transit system and more generally, how are people able to get around in Ann Arbor? What two aspects would you prioritize to improve it?
Thanks. Um, so yeah, I think um one of the things that we have to talk about when we're talking about transit are um really the quality of our roads here in the community. Um, I think unfortunately, as a direct result of states, the state consistently underfunding our roads and infrastructure budget, um, Michigan's harsh weather conditions, um, many of our streets have fallen into disrepair. Um, that's part of the reason why I think we need to focus more on preventative measures to keep our roads operational longer. Um, but then as we're looking towards a transit system that really works for for everyone, I think we also um need to continue our commitment to developing our roads and side, developing roads and sidewalks that are planned, designed, um, operated, and really appropriately maintained to provide the safest, most convenient and accessible use by all Ann Arborites, um, whether they're walking, cycling, driving, um, or utilizing public transportation. Um, so I think we need to really take a broad look at um at our strategy for our roads and our infrastructure to make sure that um access to transit, uh public transit options um are a reality for everyone and to make sure that we're creating the most walkable and bikeable city possible. Um, I uh also think that we um need to look at ways to make sure that our transit um options are more accessible to the residents that we have. Um, and part of that, again, I, thank you. Um, going back to a previous conversation around um transit-oriented development projects, um, I think the more that we can invest in density along our major transit corridors, um, the more opportunities that we'll have for individuals to be able to live um in places that they have access to transit options for them um so that we can, again, reduce our carbon footprint, help to solve some of our affordability crisis, but then also increase access to our public transit system. Thanks.
Thank you. And now that same question about transit goes to Lisa Dish.
Thank you. Um, so certainly, a a robust transit system is is central to our uh neutrality goals. And um I think as Travis has just said, the transit system is a piece of a multi-pronged system where we want to see improved bike lanes, we want to fill sidewalk gaps, we want to make sure that our sidewalks are cleared from snow so that people can walk to work year-round and that runners can run year-round. Um, I used to be a runner, so I know how crucial that is. Um, for a city of our size, we have a relatively good transit system and we have respectable rates of ridership. Now, that's not to say that there isn't room for improvement. Um, I think we very much need to improve frequency of service, particularly outside the downtown core, particularly in Ward One. Uh, our service tends to be infrequent, and so we are, I don't think that Ward One residents are using the transit, the bus transit as much as they should be. In addition, our transit is oriented towards downtown, towards moving people to the Blake Transit Center. And that is good and efficient and important. However, um, we've had a lot of job growth along the Plymouth Corridor out past uh Highway uh 23. And uh it is, you really can't get there from from Ann Arbor or from the from Ward One side of Ann Arbor on public transportation. So we're gonna need to, you know, increase the scope of our tran- of our transit. I would also like to see us revisit the question of regional transit and redouble our efforts to develop effective regional transit because that's the only way to get some of those 83,000 commuter cars off our roads every day.
Thank you. And now that question goes to Lynn Song.
Um, I was in, I've, I've been a supporter of AAA TA's mileage campaigns in the past and 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 understand how uh crucial our our public transit system is to our city. Um, here on the northeast side and Ward Two, uh, we've got, we've, we experience it in different ways. Uh, the Plymouth 23 corridor, we've got park and rides um that are properly used for hospital workers to come into the city um and and be bussed into the BA or both hospitals. Um, and then we also experience what the Wasna corridor. Um, for students and folks who are following, who are unfamiliar with with the work that was uh planned and looked at, what the re- reimagined Wasna plan uh was ambitious. Um, and I'd like to see us revisit it. Um, if you've ever been stuck on Wasna, going to 23 or coming off of 23, it's 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 unpleasant. It keeps people from their jobs. It keeps folks from getting to school. Um, and it's it's time for us to have a really serious discussion on how we can work regionally, how we can talk to MDOT um and think about transportation um like we work with as a medium-sized urban city. Um, we do live and experience the city outside of our our own wards and our small neighborhoods. And I'm happy to see discussions happening um from all walks of life. Uh, you know, public school students actively use our our public bus system, uh rely on the system. And when I was on the Neutrals Zone Board, it was a, it was a strong and vigorous discussion on how um students who go to Ann Arbor Public Schools come in from ITSE using the bus system, and they speak really candidly about how um when Ann Arbor and Ann Arbor area voters vote to support and fund public transit, uh let's also thank to communities who can't vote, but are future voters, but who already uh go to school here and 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 work here.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Our question now goes to Evan Redmond, the question regarding transit. Hi Evan, do we have you? Evan? All right, if uh if we're having trouble, I think Evan may be having some trouble with his uh internet system and
Sorry about that. Are you able to hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you. You, you go ahead, please.
All right. Your time is not the charm, as it turns out. Uh, yeah, transit is incredibly important uh in premier because of the A20 Plan, which says to reduce vehicle miles by 50% in order to avoid the worst scenario. Politician, so I can say that I am uh against car-based development. The service in the United States right now is built around cars as opposed to walking and biking which we desperately need in order to uh reduce vehicle mile. Uh, some things we could do to improve are definitely adding more protected bike lanes to really busy uh streets right now, such as Wasna or Backard, which do not have protected bike lanes, forcing people to either ride in the streets or on the sidewalk. Uh, additionally, we could begin to shut down more streets and limit biking only. Uh, since we could do it at South University. Right now, it's incredibly congested with traffic. There's just no parking spaces there, only residential areas as more businesses close and more high-rise apartments move in. We should be uh start the process of shutting down our roads at this point. And secondly, I think we have to make AATA buses free. Uh, to do that, we have to put a park in the county and at University of Michigan. But right now, that is a doable option. It is, uh, the bus fares are not allowing people experiencing homelessness for people that are on fixed income or low incomes who did around town. And mobility is incredibly important, especially if you need to go to a job interview, a grocery store. So AATA buses should be made free to the public and their routes um in more rapid, more frequent bus stops.
Thank you, Evan. And we'll now go to uh Study Group One, and this question will be for Lisa Dish.
Hello. My question, uh, excuse me, Ann Arbor recently unveiled a $1 billion carbon neutrality plan. How do you plan on working with the university to achieve the city's climate goals? Thanks.
That's a great question. Uh, it is clear that the university's participation is crucial for the city to realize its carbon neutrality goals. I have signed petitions, written letters to the regents, and rallied my colleagues to put pressure on the university to finish its own sustainability climate action plan and have meaningful goals in that plan. Um, I will, I would continue to do my best to be a conduit of communication between the university and the city and also uh to put pressure on the university. I think that um, I think that the first kinds of things that I would like to do as a member of city council is to take the pieces of that plan that we can enact without spending enormous amount of money, enormous amounts of money, and enact them. So it is currently illegal to build anything but a single-family home in most of Ann Arbor. Single-family housing is not only the most offensive, uh, offensive, excuse me, expensive housing, it's also the most energy-intensive. And so we need to uh change our zoning codes to allow for more diverse forms of housing throughout the city, and in particular, as a number of people have mentioned, along uh transit corridors, uh corridors that are well-supported by public transit. Many people not only want to live near where they work, but they also want to be able to shop where they live. And I would love to make it more possible for things like the the Two Argus Farm Stores, which are peripheral to downtown, things like that to sprout up in other neighborhoods. Um, there's currently nothing I can walk to right now to pick up a grocery or uh or even go to a bar, really. So I would like to, um, I would like to see more multi-use zone throughout the city.
Thank you very much. And that question now goes to Lynn Song.
Um, I was really pleased to see uh Missy Stoltz's um work come forward to city council. She's done an excellent job in in just framing what's possible within our city and in understanding um carbon neutrality work and what that that means to us as individuals, um, you know, in our own personal lives and what we can do uh to to advance, you know, greater policy initiatives across the city. Um, as it, we know, we know that um the university is is the big grill in the room, right? Um, not only do we rely with on them for economic reasons, but if we're gonna talk about carbon neutrality, we need to talk about the commuters coming in uh to work at the university, at the hospitals and and on campus, and then students increasingly slow, so because there there isn't enough housing for them to live here. Um, and I was, I was really, really happy to see that, you know, the university is, uh, the president's commission is is taking a close look at what commuter challenges are um and how we can figure out collaborations with AAA TA uh and then also look to more creative solutions for biking and walking. So pedestrians, um, you know, pedestrian um oh and and biking as real mode, a real mode of transportation. Um, I, I hope that when we look at these plans, we can also take a serious look at how we can fund them. Um, university, I'm sure is is, you know, university funding and city funding are on two different planets. Um, and and I, I I'm hopeful that we can figure out ways that um are collaborative and that we can find um funding sources that would work together because the the city and campus lines are 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 blurry. Um, so I, you know, I look forward to that, and I I encourage everyone to look at what's happened along East William. Uh, that was a collaboration with uh the city and the library. The East William Bike Lane is is one effort, one uh nice effort to to make sure that there is a bike and pedestrian path through the city.
Thank you. And that same question now goes to Evan Redmond.
Thank you. Yeah, this is a great question. Uh, as you know, the university is a state institution, so there's a little direct power that the Ann Arbor City Council can put on the university. And you also know, the university has been getting grilled in recent months for not divesting from fossil fuels and continuing to operate their coal-powered power plant. Thing that we could do where we could collaborate with the university initiative is to create our public-owned electric utility. Right now, DE is both a monopoly and a private company, provide all the power to Ann Arbor. Uh, also means that they put profit over people. They have a fiduciary responsibility to keep the most money as possible um and wring that out of the people of Ann Arbor's pockets. So in order to get around them, the uh state constitution
Hi Evan, we've lost you again, and I I hope you can come back.
Can you hear me right now?
Yeah, I've got you back there for a second. Keep going.
All right. So A two zero calls for one percent renewable energy by 2030. But right now, under DTE's current plan, it isn't possible. And they're also trying to lock the state for community choice segregation, which right now is illegal under state law. And I don't trust the Republicans in the State House to allow this to happen. But starting in Ann Arbor Energy Utility is going to be a key way to one percent renewable energy. Could also use that as a collaboration with University of Michigan to both get rid of their coal plants and also work in tandem to potentially get some funding to improve other areas of Ann Arbor, such as increasing the electric vehicle fleet, increasing The university is, is a main driver of our housing problem as well. But like I said, Ann Arbor City Council basically has to clean up this mess by making more publicly-owned housing at lower prices than the market, by making more market-owned prices or making more market-owned buildings. I don't believe the prices will do that.
Thank you. And the same question now goes to Travis. And again, we can always repeat a question.
Thanks. So when it comes to carbon neutrality, Ann Arbor kind of took the moonshot approach, right? We we set our ambitious goal first and then developed the plan on how to get there. From what I know about U of M, they're doing kind of the opposite. They're evaluating, obviously, is to continue to work on our relationships with the administration, with members of the Board of Regents. Several of them actually live here in Ann Arbor, so they're also invested here in our community as well. But I also, I think, want to say something that I think is relatively uncontroversial, which is that I have the utmost confidence and respect in Dr. Missy Stoltz, our Office of Sustainability and Innovation, and our entire A two zero team. They're leading our efforts on carbon neutrality. They're already in conversations with the university. I've actually heard prior to our shutdown, I was at an event where President Schlissel spoke on this issue to alumni. And I think we just need to make sure that we continue to support that effort. I think we need to continue to provide adequate funding for their efforts to ensure that their office has the resources they need to help work to eliminate our portion of the contribution to our climate emergency. I think there are things we can partner with the university on around housing density and collaboration on renewables like solar. Obviously, we can work toward more walkable and bikeable community with regional transit as an option. And then here locally, and this isn't necessarily a partnership with the university on all fronts, but I believe that we need to reestablish our local materials recovery facility. We're currently shipping our recyclables 250 miles away, which just doesn't make sense. We need to permanently reopen it, join a regional waste authority, and commit to unionized workforce for our solid waste and waste disposal. And I think we should expand our compost to pick up year-round, which will significantly impact our our carbon footprint. Thanks.
Thank you. And our next question will come from Study Group Five, and it will be directed first to Lynn Song.
Hi. So the COVID-19 pandemic has caused a lot of uncertainty, and part of that deals with housing, especially for students. Specifically for the upcoming 2020 to 21 school year, it's uncertain whether or not school will continue to be online in the fall. And as that uncertainty continues, students are unsure of whether or not they'll be returning to campus and how they're going to pay for their already-signed leases for the fall. So how does the City Council, or how would you, as a City Council member, address this and ensure that students still have the ability to focus on schoolwork while not being put under undue hardship for these leases that they've already signed and can't live in? Thank you.
This is an excellent, excellent question. It's, it's actually a conversation that I had with a regent where I had pushed for support for a tenants' union. When I was a student at the university, I relied on the tenants' union to look at a lease, you know. I was a poly-sci student. I didn't, I had never rented an apartment before. And I didn't understand the terms. I didn't understand, you know, the risks. And to my surprise, the regent didn't realize that there is no longer a tenants' union. He said, this is, this is a great, it's a great service, and I enjoyed it myself. And I said, we haven't had it for over 20 years. You know, I think, I think community members here in the city forget, forget that we, we have a large portion of our community members, our renters, and our students, students and families. We're here in Ward Two. We have family-student housing. And, you know, I hear the worries from folks who are trying to figure out, you know, what will life look like in the next calendar year, in the next school year. And the things that the city can do is work more closely with. We've, we've got a great nonprofit based in Ipsy who who was formerly based here in Ann Arbor, Legal Services of South Central Michigan. And they've been advocating and working directly on on tenants' rights. You know, and and just seeing if the university can take a serious, make make a serious commitment to, you know, funding that work, that legal work again. And then for the city to, you know, encourage what they've already advanced, which is a moratorium on evictions. But again, you know, students can speak for your own needs and your own rights the best. And if, you know, if you can commit to coming to giving public comments to City Council, speaking to the regents, and demanding answers, you know, hopefully we can get some real answers.
Thank you. And that same question now goes to Evan Redmond.
So housing is, right, it is incredibly, it is First of all, I would also like to say that I, to support the re-establishment of the tenants' union, I would like to go one step further to voice my public support for if you are being unfairly treated or charged for rent that or you are not currently living in. I support the potential of the national rent strike that will be coming up to reach great depression levels of economic turmoil. And there are going to be a lot of people who will be thrown out of their homes. And in my mind, if you consider housing a human right, anyone being addicted for any reason is a systemic failure. So we cannot go back to normal system that we've had previously. At that point, we're too far gone. The departure point has been passed. For, for students, I understand that it is an incredibly stressful time. It should not necessarily be up to the students to have to search high and low all over the city for affordable housing. I believe that it should be provided by the university. But if not provided by the university, it should be provided by the city of Ann Arbor. And we should definitely switch more of our city-owned land into housing allowance. There are lots of parking lots, lots of surface-level lots that can be turned into either high-rises or quadplexes to provide lower rates for both students and working people.
Thank you. And that next question in regard to the coronavirus and rents and whether there may not even be class here next fall, and how will that be handled by students who who have leases already, will now go to Travis Redina.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, unfortunately, I I think this is a reality that we're living in here for the foreseeable future. I, I don't necessarily think that coronavirus has created new problem, has necessarily created all these new problems for us, but potentially just exposed some of the problems that already existed within our community, particularly around this issue. I remember as a student being thrown off my freshman year when partway through my first semester, I am already on the hunt for housing and realizing that I'm behind. The fact that 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 is the system that we're living in, that you're signing a lease six to eight months before you're actually going to move in, is already a problem. And it's in part created by the housing market that we have here in Ann Arbor. I also would support the re-establishment of a tenants' union. I would also support the immediate creation of a city renters' commission to ensure that the residents who make up half of our city's population and who are financing our city through the taxes that are built into their rent and an impact on policy here in the city. I, I think that commission should be empowered to provide formal advice and guidance to the council and the mayor on issues like eviction practices, but also on the increasing cost of rent, access to amenities and public transportation and other services. But then I think we also need to look more broadly at our housing market in general. This pandemic doesn't change my priorities for affordable housing, but I think it does emphasize the need for us to take action. We're in the midst of an affordability crisis prior to this outbreak, and that's a reality that will simply be made worse by increased unemployment, shrinking household incomes, and the real possibility that there may be people who have signed leases that they're not going to be able to fulfill because they won't be coming back here for school. So that's why I think we need to continue looking at more options for increased housing access and overall improving the health of our housing market. Thanks.
Thank you. That same question now goes to Lisa Dish.
This is a really important question, and I wish that I had a really good answer for it. The coronavirus pandemic has interrupted education and raised challenges to education at the university, in the public schools, on every level. And I was so angry when the university shut down because I didn't want to stop teaching in person, but it was the right thing to do. And it turns out that that was the least of the disruptions, the things that that, what you're raising about the leases that you are now committed to, that you were often asked to make to much earlier in the year than is in fact legal. This is a serious issue. As far as I know, there is nothing currently that the city can do to legally get you out of your lease. I wish there were, and if there is, I want someone to tell me so that I know what I should be fighting for. This does point to a, a, a big hole in our municipal democracy, and that is that renters are among the most underrepresented groups in this city. And so I do support and have on my website that I support a renters' commission. We have a commission for everything else, almost everything imaginable in this city, but not for renters. And the lack of a renters' commission is a lack of a voice. It's also the lack of an institution that could help to mobilize students. Because part of the imbalance of power that students confront in this city is that they are not well-mobilized in local politics. And that's not due to their own lack of motivation or paying attention. It's too easy to blame it on those things. It's that there doesn't exist an institutional structure to represent them, to mobilize them. So yes, to a renters' commission, yes, to a tenants' union. I strongly support the work that Gio is doing on that. And I very much hope that we can find some relief if unfortunately we aren't able to do residential teaching.
Thank you. Thank you. The next question will come from Study Group Four, and it will be directed at Evan Redmond first.
Hi. Our question is about student involvement with the city. So the relationship between the city of Ann Arbor and the U of M student body has not always been the greatest. For example, we learned that campus was divided up among the city's five wards to dilute the political power of students at the city level. Given this history, how would you incorporate the University of Michigan and its students into your approach to governance?
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. All right, finally. So I think that is an excellent question. I have stood before City Council in the past and pushed for nonpartisan elections. In my mind, the, what makes something more democratic is a more choices and also getting more people involved in the process. You are definitely right that the University of Michigan has been gerrymandered up to marginalize student representation in city government. By pushing for nonpartisan elections, it would essentially be an election in August, which is when our election is now. Everyone understands that that is the very important election because whoever wins the Democratic primary will generally be unimposed or have an easy win in November. So that occurs when all the students are out of town. So I propose having nonpartisan elections, in which case there would be a, few people will be selected, the highest-vote-getters, in August, and then have a runoff in November. I'm very supportive of the way that the state of Michigan approved the absentee for any reason and also same-day registration. I was down at the city clerk's office March 10th for the presidential election, handing out blankets and pizza. So much pizza that we had to hand out. But that is still not enough. You should be able to register at your polling place. But I highly support having nonpartisan elections in the city of Ann Arbor. Every other city in the state does it except for Ipsulanti, Ann Arbor, and Ionia, I believe.
Thank you very much. And that same question now goes to Travis Redina.
Hi, thanks. I think this is a really great question as well. It's actually something that I've been talking about since my time on campus and realizing through my activism within the College Democrats that our student voice was really broken up because of the way that the city is divided into our ward system with essentially campus at the center. I know that my ward has a student population around the South University State Street area. But the reality is that unfortunately, yes, you are broken into five wards. In some ways, that gives you access to all of the council members, but you recognize the very real situation and that it also dilutes the power of your vote. I think it's really important for not only council members, but candidates for council to continue participating in activities just like this one so that we continue to have open dialogue with students. I have participated in this and strive to continue to have conversations with students. Unfortunately, that is made more difficult now by the fact that many of you aren't here. But prior to the the stay-home order, I had met with members of the College Democrats already and was starting conversations with them. But I think we need to look no further, actually, than the March 10th presidential primary to demonstrate that students really do want to be engaged in the process and that we need to do a better job of meeting them where they are. My understanding is that the clerk's office already has plans to provide mobile voter registration sites on campus in the lead-up to the fall election. And I think we need to make sure that we're, we're continuing with those efforts to ensure that students have access. But then I think we also just need to continue efforts to keep the public engaged. Right now, it's challenging for everyone, not just students, to stay engaged with, with the public or with the council and candidates for council. And so I think we can be doing a lot more outreach, a lot more creative ones to to get in touch with voters. Thanks.
Thank you. And that question now goes to Lisa Dish.
That's a great question. I thought a lot about it, given that I'm a faculty member. I, it excites me, the, the number of things that Michigan has passed recently to lower barriers to voting. What's much more difficult is to lower the barriers towards engagement in the political process. And one of the things that research tells us is that mediating organizations are crucial for this. And so I was speaking a little bit earlier about the Renters' Commission. That's the kind of mediating organization that helps a constituency come together and recognize itself. Now, we can talk about students as if they were a constituency, and the fact that we can name them and we can imagine what their interests might be, that might, that misleads us into thinking that they are a constituency. But, but you folks really aren't quite. But, but you folks really aren't quite a constituency. A constituency recognizes itself, knows what, frames demands, knows what those demands would be. Many of you are not engaged enough in city politics to understand yourself as a city political constituency. And so I've done some work this year since I began running. We did a forum on affordable housing at the Ford School a few months ago, or maybe it was three months ago. Time has really taken on a new shape. And that was one way of reaching out to students and engaging them in the debates that are going on. I think the group that sponsors this forum is really special and more informed than most about city politics. And so I would very much like to support more events like this or events of any kind that, that, that are easier for students to participate in so that they get angry about the things that should bring them to the polls or joyful about the things that should bring them to the polls.
Thank you. And that same question now goes to Lynn Song.
I love this question. I love this question because this brings us to the history of the Human Rights Party in Ann Arbor, right? This is when students ran for city council, managed to be seated. And this is also a time when our first African-American mayor, first and only African mayor, African-American mayor was elected, Albert Wheeler. Before I had announced my candidacy, I did, like any nerd, I did all the homework that I could and just tried to understand Ann Arbor's political history. And that was one that really, I think, captures an important time in Ann Arbor's history because it, it came at a point where there's anti-war demonstrations, where, you know, we were taking a close look at desegregating schools and really understanding how does Ann Arbor define itself as a city, as a community within, within Michigan, right? And, you know, the outcome of that was that the mayor was, you know, seated for one year in a contested election. And the backlash was. Need to take a closer look at that history and understand it, understand how, how far we've come since then and what challenges remain. Students have the opportunity to run for council, reach out to the mayor, understand how commissions are seated, the roles that commissions play, you know, Transportation Commission, the Policies Housing Commission. You know, and just understand that, you know, these policies come from people. And this is where elected officials are accountable to the voices of not just complaints and wanting, you know, really narrow issues advanced, but actually formulating them. So I'd hope for greater student participation on all levels of local government. I'd love to see more students. I think Zach Ackerman, Councilman Ackerman, was a student when he first ran. More students should be at the table, should be deciding Ann Arbor's future.
Thank you very much. And that's going to need to be our last question for today. Again, and again, we thank all the candidates for being with us, again, from Public Policy 456, 756. Thank you very much for participating in what was probably the first virtual candidates forum that we've had in Ann Arbor. And hopefully we don't have to do this again next time around and things will have worked themselves out. But thank you very much and we appreciate you, again, you're being with us today. And we hope that, again, things clear up and we get through this emergency. And good luck in the race for city council and thanks for stepping up and being willing to, to get out there and talk to folks and be on the ballot.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carlotta. Great job.